Ladies and gentlemen, it's April 2nd, City Common Council Meeting. However, before we start the formal portion of our meeting, we have a public hearing for fiscal year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Applications pursuant to CDBG Citizen Participation Requirements to Include Applications for Housing and Economic Development. So this is a public hearing that is officially open. Is there anybody here to speak to this public here? And we do have one in particular. So there were two sign-in sheets. One was an attendance sheet that I believe, Devon, we need to pass this around one more time. Uh, anybody that is present, if you're willing to please sign, we are required by New York State to keep attendance. So I believe this one will come back around.
That includes city staff. That's here.
Everybody up here?
You guys know us.
Start signing.
He said you guys. Nope, we don't have to.
You say NO, N-O, or K-N-O-W?
No.
No.
Okay. I thought there was gonna be no word. Thank you, Rick. Public hearing is still officially open. This is regarding... Here we go. 2019 Community Development Block Grant Applications pursuant to CDBG Citizen Participation Requirements to Include Applications for Housing and Economic Development. Hearing, nobody present to speak. We will call the public hearing officially closed. And call the meeting officially to order. And we'll start, if you can please rise, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments. We've got the opportunity for public comments. We ask that comments be addressed to council and deal with topics relevant to the city. First up, Thomas Keegan.
I just would like to reiterate the comments that I made last time at the, um, uh, public hearing, um, covering Agenda Item Number Five, which is, um, your consideration of repealing, um, uh, Section 258 of the City Code, I believe, which is the, uh, delivery and taxis and things like that. Um, I had a chance again to, uh, review, um, that section of the City Code. And, um, just reviewing that personally, you know, it seems like there's a lot of arbitrary things in there, um, some good things, um, but I'm really glad personally to see you guys, um, considering, um, repealing that section of the code because I think if you're gonna really be able to allow two different industries, um, to allow the market to work and allow two different kind of, um, companies like, um, with taxis and ride sharing and things like that to compete, um, and I help, I hope, um, personally that, that will help improve the services in this county, um, and the city because, um, personally there are two services that I've had to use, um, for the past couple of years. I use it pretty regularly, um, with ride sharing. I did over a thousand miles last year between Uber and Lyft. Um, and a lot of the public comments that I've been hearing, um, from people, um, like online and things like that are people that don't really use those services, um, and they don't understand, um, how competition will, um, increase the quality of those services. And, um, a couple of other things that I just want to mention real quick. Um, for instance, in, uh, the Uber app, if you look at a lot of the requirements that the city, um, currently has in Section 258 on, um, taxis and things like that, um, the app itself, um, really covers a lot of those things, including having permanent records of rides, um, where you currently are requiring, um, taxis to keep permanent paper logs, um, at least digitally, um, you know, the, the rider, the driver, and the, the companies themselves currently, you know, have those records and things like that. Um, and also, um, you know, when someone hops in a cab and pays cash and leaves, um, you know, if they felt bad about that ride, they might not do anything, but, you know, from an app, it's very easy to report things about your ride, um, and, and things like that. So I, I hope people start, um, taking advantage of, you know, reporting, um, bad drivers, things like that, and, um, that's, that's basically it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Morgan Leclair.
Hi, everyone. My name's Morgan Leclair, and I'm the president of the club actively involved in the community. Short, we call it AIC, is what it most likely will be if you see any emails. And I'm here tonight just to promote the big event. So the big event is a campus, it promotes campus and community unity as it's a day for students, faculty, and staff to come together to think, say thank yous to our neighbors in the supporting community. Um, it's a little bit different than any other, like, community service event we ever do because it's not based on any socio-economic stat- status or need. It's just purely about the community as a day to give back to residents who give to us all year round as a student. So I'm here because I wanted to let everybody know that it takes place April 14th, and what happens is students or whoever signs up to help go around to job sites that are requested, and we do, like, cleanups of whatever type of tasks needed. So some of the different things a lot of people ask for are raking, gardening, painting. If it's an older person, they ask for heavy lifting of objects maybe out of a basement or something, um, and the event can take up to three hours total. Um, so right now, we have an astonishing amount of students who have signed up to volunteers, and we're looking for more job site requests from people throughout the community. So I'm just here to promote that. On, like, the sign-up online, it says the cutoff is April 5th, but we're extending it. If you email the email, I'm going to announce until the 10th because we really do need more job sites to put all of the student interests to a different place so we don't have, like, a terrible number at one job site, and we just really need more sign-ups for people who want us to help in the community. So in order to register, the email is thebigeventcortland@gmail.com, and once you, like, click or send an email to that, it's either I will respond or one of my other E-Board members through the club will send you the hyperlink, and it should be a quick form, um, that you sign out. It's like maybe ninety seconds it'll take. And then if you do not have any, um, internet access, you can leave a comment here. I'll come check in. You can find phone somewhere, phone SGA at the Student Cortland Campus. The number is online, and they will get back to me, and I will sign you up if you cannot get to a computer. So I'm just gonna leave our flyers right here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody have any questions.
Hi, Duke.
Yeah?
Have you ever considered making up a flyer and sending it out at the beginning of the year when people move in as a way of getting to know their neighbors?
No, that'd be a good idea.
I suggested it last year, but I know that, um, it tends to be an upperclassman who's in charge of the bigger event, and then they leave, and then you kinda start on your...
Yeah, definitely will. The issue this year was that last year SGA had it. It wasn't our club, or in the first year or five years, it wasn't our club, so we got it back this year.
Okay.
But I actually have a binder I'm putting together, so I'll definitely make it out of it.
That's a great idea. The binder's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think it would be nice. I live around a lot of student housing, and I think it would be really nice without, I mean, I'm sure they wouldn't say, "Boy, you really need to have your porch painted," you know?
Yeah.
But if they just say, "We live next door, and we're gonna be doing the big event in the spring, and we'd love to help you out," that would be a great way to, you know, be friendly.
Just kidding, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. And if people did not get an email address, feel free to reach out to City Hall. We can help facilitate as well getting in contact and making sure that people have the opportunity, uh, get a little bit of community service done on their property if they so desire. Next, Jean Wrightmeyer.
Hello, I am Jean Wrightmeyer from Habitat for Humanity, and I'm here tonight. We had turned in paperwork for a special event we are having September 14th, um, in the city of Cortland, right down Main Street, and the clerk's office suggested I come if you have any questions about paperwork or anything like that.
I'll have to get back to you.
Okay. They told me to come tonight.
Was there? Okay. Yeah, no, I think we're in good shape, and if there are any questions, we'll get back to you probably.
Okay. It will be held, starting at about St. Mary's, all the way down, um, Main Street, so you have an idea of where we're flying.
Very good.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Jean. And Bill Fisk.
Thank you, Mayor. I am Bill Fisk, and I wanted to speak briefly on Agenda Items Nine and Twelve. With regards to Item Nine, I have no comment on what's there, but at the last Common Council Meeting, two other applications of this sort were approved, and one of them was for 203 Tompkins Street, and as I understand it, I wasn't here to see it, the petitioner presented evidence that he was doing work on the building to bring it up. And I, I've been by that place several times, scrutinizing it as best I can from the street, and I have my doubts. So maybe code enforcement ought to take, take a peek, see if they're actually doing anything, and in the future for any of these other applications that, that this has done. Yeah, I think, I think it is very important that we do get these places fixed up and up to code. And, and that segues to my next item, which is Twelve, and I see that, uh, and, yeah, on the agenda is adoption of the National Electrical Code, which for New York State is currently the 2014 edition. By the way, twenty-eight states have adopted 2017, fifteen including New York have adopted 2014, and the rest are somewhere in the middle eighties. This is a, this is a topic that's very dear to my heart because I've been on the Code Committee for thirty-three years. And, and the, the fire and the electrical safety is very important to us, so I, not only would I like to see this council adopt this code, but resist attempts that often come from builders trying to carve out exceptions to it. Yes, they want to save money, but we need to save lives first. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. That concludes who we had signed up for public comments for this evening. We'll move on to the board reports, starting with the first board.
Um, so I'll keep it brief. I just wanted to thank all the department heads. I have been kind of taking the time to meet with some of the departments, get to understand what's going on in the city, and I want to thank the folks for taking the time for that. Um, as far as the first ward goes, we've heard a little bit about, uh, streets, which, you know, that's the time of the year that things thaw, so, um, I've been reporting those comments to the DPW, and beyond that, everything's fine.
Second ward.
For the second ward, there are concerns as it heats up and spring hopefully comes and turns nice, especially on the weekends. There are concerns about noise at night, so we're hoping neighbors will walk through the neighborhoods quietly and not loudly at two in the morning. And also, there are concerns about trash. The snow has melted again, and there's a lot of trash around left over from winter, and we'd appreciate it if people would pick up their trash. Other than that, that's about it for the second ward.
Very good. Third ward.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to, uh, thank the entire council for being patient with me. Fourteen years of public service, I was, I've missed four meetings, and I've missed that in the last couple of years, but it's not because of not wanting to be here, it was because of being in the hospital. Once again, I appreciate everybody's patience. Number two, Dr. Gage is home on, uh, Forest Ave. I continue to get calls, but I want to know that it is, um, being taken care of, and just be patient. Soon, something will happen that will be positive. And the other thing that I have is, uh, I still have some constant comments about when we put up some doggy food stations, and, uh, I wish that somehow we could really look seriously into that. I've talked to Nick Dovi a little bit, and hopefully, something like that can happen in the near future. That's about it. Once again, thank you very much for your patience. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Eric. Fourth ward.
Uh, for the most part, in the fourth ward, it's been very quiet. I just want to remind people that a mailer from DPW did go out on a nurse, and starting next Monday, April 8th, DPW will be starting to try to get out for leaf pickup, um, branch pickup. Please be patient, okay? They've had a very busy winter, as everybody knows. Winter is extremely early. If you do rake your yard, please make sure that you do not put the leaves in the road, leave it on the side so DPW can get to it easily, and sewage drains, and water may, uh, runoff water drains do not get flooded. And next week, they'll be doing it, and then they usually do a follow-up week a little later. And that's it.
Very good. Fifth ward.
Complaints on the leaves. And Jen spoke about the leaves being picked up. I talked to Nick Dovi. Many complaints on the leaf pickup. Also, a couple of days ago, my girlfriend's son was bit by a dog up on Pedaling Street in Fifth Ward, and I want to give the credit to the Cortland City Police Department for locating the person and checking with the shots, and Officer Rainbow, one of our new hires, uh, got right on it, and, uh, we found out who the owner was, and the shots were balanced, so we're good. Thank you.
Hope he's okay.
Yeah, he's fine.
Sixth ward.
Sixth ward is kind of quiet. I did, uh, feel some calls about, um, plowing, uh, tearing up lawns. DPW has, or is going to address it, um, and the mailboxes, so please be patient. They will contact you and get, get it taken care of.
Very good. Seventh ward.
Uh, just some concerns on the Salisbury Street and Cleveland Street intersection. If all of you are aware, the SNAP moved down there now on Salisbury Street, and the traffic has picked up tremendously, and there's no stop sign and/or yield sign or speed limit sign on that short street. We know it's a short street, so I'm gonna send a letter to the DPW Board to, you know, try to get at least a stop sign put up for the, the residents. Hopefully, we can get that resolved, but other than that, that's it.
Thank you, Troy. Mayor's Report, I'm gonna take this time to recognize longevity of one of our employees. We have, for thirty-five years of service to the city of Cortland, our police chief, Frank Catalano. Chief, are you here? Congratulations and thank you. Would you like to say a couple of words? Do you want me to say a couple of words about you?
Always. A hand flies when you're having fun.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you for your service.
Very much.
Thank you, Chief. Put him on the hot seat a little bit. Usually, when it's another employee, we ask the department head to say a couple of things, so is the mayor. Chief has been here a couple of years more than I, but he has been a consummate professional, does a great job of keeping council myself informed, uh, details when we're concerned about things, and appreciate every day of the thirty-five years. Thank you.
I just want to say, uh, in eighty-seven, when I got hired, Chief Catalano was my training officer, and I learned a lot of my police work from... A lot of, you, you learn a lot from your training officer, and I learned a lot from Chief Catalano. Thank you.
That was good. That could've gone a couple of different ways. Minutes, approval of minutes from the March nineteenth. We have motioned to accept the minutes as is. John Bennett, second. Gary, discussion. Any concerns regarding minutes? Troy.
A couple of things, um, that I brought up, wanted some answers tonight. I didn't see anything in the new agenda, and I didn't see any new meetings about the health insurance for the aldermen, so we'll address that at the end of the meeting.
Very good.
But as far as that, also, I think, uh, John, my, I should be, I don't think I'm wrong, but John Bennett should be signing on, not you, Mayor.
Well, nothing gets signed this evening.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just saw a line for that. I just presented you were absent as well, so.
Very good. All in favor of accepting the minutes as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? No proclamations this evening. First up on the agenda, we have, from Cortland Area Communities That Care, Matt Whitman, and he has a presentation on opioid use in Cortland. Matt, welcome.
Thank you, and yes, so my name's Matt Whitman. I'm the Director of Cortland Area Communities That Care. I know I've been here in the past, but for those of you who are unaware, one of our major initiatives over the last five years has been a state grant focused on the prevention of heroin and opioid misuse amongst twelve to twenty-five rooms in our community. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about one of the things that we do, which is our annual youth survey. Uh, so every year, we survey seventh through twelfth graders, where we assess substance use rates, but also risk protective factors, a lot of problem behaviors associated with the youth in our community. So in front of you, you have our annual report that summarizes those findings. I'm gonna give you a kind of top-line summary, uh, of what we know about substance use amongst youth, talk about a little bit, uh, some of the other data we know around opioids and some events we have coming up at the end of the month. Uh, and so overall, you know, what our survey looks at is the major substance use, so that there's kind of four major substances: alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drugs. We assess a lot of other things, but I'm only gonna talk about those four. Uh, so in summary, I think what I can say is overall, usage rates are low and stable. Uh, so when you look at alcohol, for instance, over the last decade, our major factors, thirty day use, so whether or not students have used any alcohol in the past month is what we look at, so really focus on. Um, over the last decade, that has varied between eighteen and twenty-two percent. Really doesn't change between those, those rates. At this year, it's twenty and a half percent. Uh, so very stable, uh, pretty low when you compare it to where we were even twenty years ago, when that rate was over double that. When you look at tobacco, I think this has really been the success that we can fo- focus on in the community. This year's thirty day use rate is four point four percent, which is the lowest we've ever had as a community, so very, very low rates of cigarette use. Uh, the caveat to that is we have started asking about vaping in the youth survey. I'm sure all of you have heard news reports about vaping, um, and so we've asked that question specifically about thirty day use in, in this year. Sadly, I'm gonna have to report that that rate was twenty-two percent for thirty day use, which makes it the most widely used substance, outpacing alcohol for the first time in our youth survey data. And to give you a sense of what's happened, last year, that, that rate was eight percent. So we went from eight percent to twenty-two percent in just one year. Uh, this is something the Health Department is, is focused on working on. We're having, uh, conversations about how to address this, but it's definitely something that's popping out of the youth survey data. Uh, when you look at marijuana, very similar to alcohol, very stable rates, uh, between twelve and fourteen percent. This year's rate was thirteen point nine. Uh, the one thing that we are looking at when it comes to marijuana, we measure perception of risk, so it's essentially a question that asks how risky do students think it is for someone to smoke marijuana one or two times a week? Uh, this year, the rate dropped below fifty percent for the first time, and that's been slowly declining over the last decade. Uh, and so that's kind of just an indicator that we'd be looking at, that it might be concerning as we move forward that rates might take higher, especially with, uh, larger conversations happening around marijuana use. And so the fourth drug that I'm gonna focus on is prescription opioids, and so this is what our grant has really focused on. And again, rates for twelve, seven to twelve-year-old, seven to twelfth grade is very low, one point five percent for thirty day use rates. We've seen a, a drop in that over the last few years, and that's the lowest rate we've had. Uh, even when you look at lifetime use, you're looking at three point six percent. Uh, so really, when I talk about opioids, I, I really presented it, it's not really a, a youth problem necessarily in our community. The average age of overdose in Cortland County is closer to forty, uh, rather than young, and so, uh, it's, it's really a, a twenty-five and older kind of issue that I think we're facing here in Cortland. We also survey eighteen to twenty-five-year-olds, very similar rates than when you see in the seventh through twelfth grade, um, pretty low, different types of prescription drug use, more stimulants, so things like Adderall is the problem with that population than what we see in the seventh to twelfth grade population. But one of the things that we did focus on is, is access. So how are kids getting access to prescription drugs that they're either misusing or abusing? And when we measured that four years ago, the number one place is at home. So they're not getting them from drug dealers, they're going into the medicine cabinet either from friends or from family, and they're getting them at home. And so that was a big thing that we focused on with enhancing our drug disposal programs, our drug diversion programs. Um, and so that takes the form of our drug ta- uh, kiosks, one of which is downstairs in the, in the police department. We have four of them, and actually, five of them now, the hospital has one. Uh, so anyone can go anytime, dispose of their prescription, prescription drugs. We also have the annual take-back event, which the next one is April 27th. Everyone has a postcard and, and their packets. Uh, and so again, we have four locations: Cortlandville, Homer, Marathon, and Cincinnatus, that anyone can go and dispose of their prescription drugs. And we know that's really important, that it's not just youth who are getting access, that that's where most people who misuse or abuse prescriptions are getting access, is at home and from friends and from family. And when we look at the data, we've had success. So four years ago, again, that was the number one place. It's still the number one place, but we've had a fifty-eight percent reduction in the number of students reporting that they get access to prescription drugs either at home or from, from family. So we've really invested in that strategy and make, wanna make sure everyone knows that they shouldn't be flushing down, flushing their prescription drugs, they should be protecting themselves, protecting their families, you know, protecting their pets, you know, you know, anything that can happen in accidental overdoses, you know, anyone who has a prescription opioid is at risk for overdose, uh, regardless of if they're misusing it or abusing it. Um, and then we also looked at, you know, what are we actually getting when we take back all these medications? So last year, we collected over three thousand pounds of prescription drugs through our just disposal events and kiosks, uh, but you know, that could be a lot of blood pressure medicine, right? Which is still good, but we wanted to know. So we started initial, kind of, trying to figure out what exactly are we bringing in? And through our initial findings, we found that eleven percent of what we're collecting are actually controlled substances, uh, which is higher than other studies that I've done. Usually, it's about five to six percent, uh, so that's good. Uh, and then of the eleven percent, seventy-three percent are actually opioids, so things like hydrocodone, oxycontin, uh, morphine. And so we're doing a really, really good job both collecting more and collecting the things that we need to get out of the hands of not just young people, but everyone in the community in the form of prescription painkillers. Um, and so those are a lot of, you know, a big focus of our efforts have been on reducing access. You know, we've also been working closely with the hospital in reducing prescribing. Uh, so the emergency room, uh, at Guthrie has seen a fifty percent reduction in overall prescribing over the last two years. Uh, we've been working very closely with Dr. Furman, who's the chief medical officer. Even at a county level, we've had an eight percent reduction in overall prescribing over the last, uh, from 2016 to 2017, uh, and that's really looking at access. You know, that's the number one thing that we focus on, is how people are getting access to things that they could potentially abuse, misuse, or overdose on. The hospital has also installed a kiosk, so we now have five. They're now prescribing Narcan in the emergency room, which is something we've really focused on, and they're able to do bridge prescribing for dupanorphine or, or cipoxine. So there's a lot of, uh, initiatives that are happening. So we're one of ten communities in the state that has this grant, and I can tell you that in a lot of ways around opioids, it may not seem like it, but we are really leading the way, and a lot of the strategies that we know are going to work over the long term to reduce not just misuse and abuse, but overdoses. You know, initial reports from 2018 indicate that overdoses, overdose deaths are down in the county, which is very good. You know, we have seen an increase in hospitalizations, um, but, you know, it depends how you look at that. You can say, you know, we're getting more people access to Narcan, we're getting more people access to treatments, and, and that's a good thing. And so, you know, overall, uh, I think there's still a lot of work to do when it comes to opioids and, and reducing overdose deaths, and like I said, it's, I think we need to really transition to the adult population from a lot of the work that we've done with youth, um, because, you know, the rates are just really, really low, and, and that's a good thing. Uh, and that really leads me to the last point, is we also have two other events coming up at the end of the month. You also have, uh, flyers in your booklets. We're holding a screening of a documentary called SMACs that looks at heroin addiction and recovery in rural communities. So it was actually filmed in Delaware and Atsio Counties, just east of here, uh, and really looks at what resources... in Delaware and Atsio Counties, just east of here, and really looks at what resources are available in local rural communities to deal with opioids. And so we're going to be holding screenings on April twenty-third here in Portland at the high school, and then April twenty-fifth at Tompkins Portland Community College, and each screening is going to be followed by a panel of local experts talking about what resources we have here in Portland through the hospitals, through prevention, through treatment providers, so people can really address opioids in our community. And so with that, I know I tend to talk fast, so are there any questions regarding data, anything that we know about opioids, or any initiatives that we have going? Yes?
Yes, a few questions. One, your take-back event on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, is it the Portland Fire Station, the Homer Fire Station, the Marathon Fire Station?
So it's at Cortlandville Fire Station, the Homertown Hall, Marathon High School, and then the Cincinnatus Fire Station, and all of the locations except for Cortlandville are nine to twelve, and Cortlandville goes to one. And again, you can bring any types of medications, pet medications. The only thing that we discourage people from bringing is any needles or sharps.
Okay. And overdoses in the county are down from what to what?
So initial reports from two thousand eighteen, we had thirteen overdoses in two thousand seventeen, overdose deaths, and so I think in the initial report of two thousand eighteen, there was only one for the first three months, but data is always lagging when it comes to those reports, so we don't really have the full picture of what happened in two thousand eighteen yet. And then I can also say the opioid, looking at opioid data is also complicated. You can't look at just one stat and get a full picture of what's happening. You have to look at a wide variety of stats to really understand what's really, you know, I mentioned, hospitalizations are up, Narcan use was seemingly down, even though the Health Department has distributed more Narcan kits than ever before last year, and so we kind of have to read between the lines sometimes when it comes to opioids, unfortunately.
But you're feeling optimistic about that, as someone who has access to all of them?
As someone who looks at data every single day, all day, I am feeling optimistic about it, yes.
I like that. And then my last question is about the Jules, about the e-cigarettes. To what do you attribute the rise of vaping?
If I could answer that question, you know, it's really tough. If you look at the particular things that happened with Juul, they marketed in a way that I think particularly appealed to young people. Most of their marketing happened through Instagram with the same playbook that I think tobacco used thirty, forty years ago, and regulations was a little slow to catch up to that. I think you've started seeing regulators understand what has happened, but it's a little too late when you see rates increase as rapidly as they have, and so I think it's going to be an interesting response. I don't know what the answers are right now. I think we're responding in the best way we can.
I know that they have candy flavors. Do kids think in general that vaping is safer than cigarette smoking?
Yes, so they do. We asked a question related to that as well. They think it's either less harmful or don't have, you know, equally as harmful as cigarettes. Not a lot of them think it's more harmful. About thirty-three percent think it's less harmful than cigarettes. And again, you know, we don't have all the answers to that question. We don't know what the long-term consequences of Juul is, you know, we can say, so it's a complicated issue that we're just kind of grappling with, and like I said, the Health Department is really focused on that issue.
Well, there isn't the smoke, but it's still addictive.
Yes, and it's a very, very high level of nicotine, very, very high dose, and again, you know, I talk a lot about adolescent brain development, so the adolescent brain is very different than the adult brain, that part of our brain that is responsible for decisions, the frontal lobe doesn't stop developing until twenty-five. Nicotine has a very different impact on the youth brain than it does the adult brain, so that high level of nicotine, we don't know how that's going to maybe cause developmental problems with brain development. We don't know what the long-term consequences of that are.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Matt, thank you. Our second agenda item, consideration of a resolution to authorize a city to submit an application to New York State for CDVG Economic Development Funds of up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of facilitating the expansion of New York hemp oil and further authorizing the mayor to sign said application and enter into grant agreement with the state if the funds are awarded. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. Questions or...
I just wanted to clarify. So my partner, Bobcat, is our partners with Alan as far as Main Street Farms go, so business partners, and I just wanted to clarify, I spoke with Rick to make sure that there's no conflict of interest. He said there is no conflict of interest. My partner does not own any interest in the New York hemp oil, so I just wanted to make sure I clarified that.
I think for the public, we should also clarify that hemp oil does not have the same properties as smoking marijuana. It's, it's, I don't know if it's a fad. I don't know how researched the effects are, but it's supposed to be a pain relieving, I think.
It's for, my daughter has seizures, and it's for seizures, pain relief. Hemp oil is not, there's no THC in it, which is the active ingredient to make you high, so there's nothing in there for that. So it's actually good for the community.
So I don't, but I don't want people to get in a lather thinking that we are, as a city, investing, condoning investing in marijuana. Don't get the two views.
Alan, how do we do?
You guys are extremely well-informed.
For those that don't know, Alan Gendelman is here. He is the brain behind New York Hemp Oil, correct?
Yes.
Further questions? And for the public, anybody that did not have the opportunity to read the application, approximately forty-seven new jobs, fifty-one of percent, which would be available to low-income persons, and this would go into the former JTS lumber site down in South Main, so really positive addition in a number of respects.
And I think the jobs, too, just to also add to that, was that some of them were, you know, high-level training, but a lot of them were entry-level positions as well, so...
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Very good. Number three, consideration of resolutions to approve special event application for the Arts and Wine Festival on Saturday, August third, two thousand nineteen, from ten a.m. to five p.m. Motion to consider. Troy Beck with second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. Is there anybody present to speak to this? This is an annual event, so typically, we get through this pretty smoothly.
If you have questions, I'm the director of the cultural council, so I will not be voting on this item, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention? Item number four, resolution to waive the fees for the special event application for the Arts and Wine Fest on Saturday, August third, from ten a.m. to five. Motion to consider. Gary Thomas, second. Katie Sullivan, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention, correct. Item number five, consideration of a resolution to approve the abolishment of City Code Chapter two hundred and fifty-eight regarding taxi cabs. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Troy Beck with discussion.
Once, Rick, once this is... So if this is abolished, if this is abolished, there's not going to be inspections of any of the taxi cabs or anything like that, right?
No, that's correct. Yeah, that, you know, the state of New York inspections will continue, the registration by the state of New York will continue, but it will not be the effort that we take on or do we that we require.
Okay, one of my, one of the councilmen that actually did the law back in the day called me about this, and how much work they did to put into this code as to the safety of the cabs and all that, and that was her big concern, is that they did all that work, and now the safety of the cabs are going to be, you know, people at risk based on not having these inspections by the police.
They didn't have Uber and Lyft laws, and they didn't have the state of New York, which not, does not allow us to similarly regulate them. I think that's where the conflict came, that's the change in circumstance from when they did all that work to now, and certainly, if that becomes one of the issues that Deputy Chief Sandy and I see over time that those are the complaints we're getting, those are the things we're going to be recommending back to you to change and add to it.
That's good.
Yeah, this is not something that we want to just go away and not think. We want to have it go away and see what the market delves, and then kind of keep track of what's going on so that we can say, okay, these are the regulations that we think are going to maintain safety and such forth. So that's, that's sort of where our advice is on this particular issue.
Okay.
Does anybody know what Uber and Lyft require in terms...
We do. I mean, they require, you know, obviously names. There's a, they do, they do but don't share pivotal records, and they have some requirements relative to their driving abstract and what they have or don't have, and that sorts of, but that's all internal to Uber and Lyft, and it's not something that's shared with the police or anything at all. So there's nothing that we regulator can enforce at this level.
No, I understand, but I wonder if we take away our regulations, and I'm all for letting them regulate their fares, that seems only just, but in terms of, in terms of doing a similar check on the backgrounds of taxi drivers in the city, there isn't the expectation that those companies are going to be doing that, is there?
Yes.
They have plans of taking care of them?
They generally do that now, the taxi cabs on their own and those sorts of regulations. I know that Chief Sandy has, or Deputy Chief Sandy has reported that, that they do have those sort of internal controls. Again, it would be then similar to what Uber has, that that's internal, and they don't hire the people that are going to be trouble, or they get rid of the people that become trouble. But again, that's the market driving that rather than the city of Portland regulating and requiring those things right now. We may come back and say, hey, they're not doing it, we need to introduce these things again, but right now, we're looking for them to do the same thing that Uber and Lyft is doing.
Thank you.
And does the state set any requirements for Uber or Lyft?
No. Well, in cities that have population over one hundred thousand, they allow the localities to regulate. We're not one of those, obviously. There are insurance requirements for both Uber and Lyft, and the bigger cities, New York City, Albany, Syracuse, over a hundred thousand, they have local regulation. So there is, it's regulation without regulation, I guess, from the state of New York. Insurance is their primary requirement, and obviously, state, New York State inspections for the cars and registration for the cars, that will continue.
Does Chief get on exactly what Paul would do extra, he says, the state inspection, what extra would Paul do to deny an application or... I don't know what the extras that he would do to ensure that these are safe.
There wouldn't be any application process that I'm aware of. It would basically be complaint-driven. If somebody has a complaint about the taxi cab fare that they had, as far as rudeness or uncleanliness or anything like that, that would be something we'd have to look into, but at this point, we would only have the V and T, the Vehicle and Traffic Law, to fall back on any kind of violations.
So he doesn't do anything special with the inspections, other than...
We wouldn't. If we don't have regulation, we can't.
No, but currently, what does he do? Do you know? Currently, with the way we have in Britain, what does he do?
We would do inspections twice a year for safety issues and cleanliness.
And during those inspections, do they often find something that needs to be ready?
Yeah, we would. We would take a cab out of service until they either fixed something that we saw or cleaned it up better.
But those inspections are often finding something that needs to be changed?
Well, if they're, if they don't know they're coming sometimes, but we have to schedule it in order to get them in the right place at the right time, so they know an inspection's coming, and they do their best to present their best taxi.
So if the state inspection says there's bad brakes, obviously, they got to get bad brakes. But Paul Sandy does not say, okay, his brakes are bad beyond what, you know what I mean, what the inspection says. There's nothing, you know, regulates that.
Right. No, if we get rid of this, there would be no regulation.
Right.
But our inspection wouldn't necessarily inspect the brakes like a garage would.